Welcome, everyone, to the March 6th meeting of the Planning Commissioner.
Hmm.
I'm your Chair, Sarah Ostrock, Funes Ostrock. To provide a comment during the meeting, please fill out the speaker card and give it to the clerk. You have three minutes to make your comments. Please note that Commission time limits and rules of decorum will apply to public comment. This meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission is hereby called to order. May we please have a roll call? Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Shahadi.
Here.
Commissioner Zeng. Vice Chair Palma Koo.
Here.
Chair Funes Ostrock.
Here.
Commissioners Evan and Faria are absent today. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Oh, sorry, my apologies. Can we do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Are there any items or announcements from staff?
We do not have any announcements from staff.
Okay. And then, does any member of the public wish to address the Commission on an item that is not on the agenda at this time? Please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk. Nope, seeing none. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We have not received any speaker cards. We did receive a public comment on an item not on the agenda, which I have forwarded to all the planning commissioners, and we will include in the final agenda packet.
Excellent, thank you. And then, next on the agenda is the disclosure of ex parte communications. If any commissioner has had any communication with applicants, did any site or project visits had interactions with any third parties, or has any conflicts regarding any items on the agenda, you may disclose them at this time. If you would like to accuse yourself of an item, you can do so at this time. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item.
Item number one is under the consent calendar. It's consideration and approval of minutes from the February 20th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I move the minutes.
A second.
Yes.
Commissioner Shahadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Zeng.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palma Koo.
Yes.
Chair Funes Ostrock.
Yes.
Commissioners Evan and Faria are absent today. Is this holding?
So, we're good, so, yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. May we have a list of the consent calendar items?
We just know.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, okay.
Public comments, public comments.
Wait.
Comments about the consent calendar.
Are there any public comments about the consent calendar?
We have no public comments on the consent calendar.
Skip straight to the, there's no public hearing items on the administrative business.
Okay, so, um, can you please read the next agenda item?
Yes. Item number two, under Administrative Business, is Report Regarding Submission of the 2024 Genentech Annual Report for Planning Commission Consideration, and Billy Gross is going to give the staff report.
Thank you, Billy.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Billy Gross with the Planning Division. It's good to see all of you again, and it's that time of year. It's time for the Genentech Annual Report. So, one of the requirements with the Genentech project, they last updated the master plan in 2020, and within the municipal code, the Genentech Master Plan District, one of the requirements is that they come to the Planning Commission every year and give an update on some specific items. And so, we're here this evening to talk through those. I'll actually just hand it over to Will Hewn with Genentech, and he'll walk you through each of the specific items in the presentation, and then staff's happy to answer any questions that the Commission might have after the presentation.
Thank you, Billy. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Will Hewn, Site Planning Manager with Genentech. I'm joined by Sophie Martin as well this evening. As Billy mentioned, we have our 2024 Master Plan Annual Report for you this evening. I'll try to be as brief as possible, aiming for about 60 minutes tonight. I'm kidding, just about 10. Okay. Just a quick overview, and then we'll talk about our development in 2024, followed by a little bit about transportation, and a deep dive into one of our recent initiatives on that front, and then a quick delve into our Development Agreement, miscellaneous topics, and leave a lot of time for questions. Excellent. As you know, our master plan allows a maximum of 9 million square feet of development. We're still well below that target. We had another quiet year in 2024, like 2023, with really one purchase, one property acquisition, and one primary new construction building. The property acquisition was the property of 525 DNA Way, and, again, as I mentioned, we're still well below that 9 million square foot total build-out, with a slight decrease from 2023 to 2024 in total square footage, due to a smaller security building, which was our primary 2024 project. It was the removal of our prior security building and construction of a new state-of-the-art security structure, which was a great partnership with the city of South San Francisco, in particular, the police and fire teams. We're excited to have this new structure in the center of campus, which will allow our campus to remain resilient and sustainable in terms of emergency response into the I'll mention briefly our upcoming projects and initiatives on campus. This isn't a part of 2024, but it's good to mention and keep in mind, we have our ongoing visioning process taking place, which we mentioned last year. And we'll also be back in the near future with a proposal to privatize some of the remaining public streets on campus, as well as rezoning those public street areas and the two recent property acquisitions into the Genentech Master Plan zoning district. But critically, at this time, no development projects are proposed as a part of that action. It's just to create some consistency across the campus. We'll be back with more details in the near future on that front. One minor correction, B86 complete, not just the core and shell completed. The tenant improvement was fully complete as of just a few, I'm sorry, excuse me, all staff were moved in as of a few weeks ago, and this project is particularly exciting. It's a great leasing partnership, and it's an all-electric laboratory space. It's one of the first in California, and we're excited to take those learning lessons from this project and apply them to future lab spaces. No new standalone leases in 2024, however. Okay, excellent. I think that covers our development activities. Move on to a little bit about transportation. We completed our mode share and commute cordon count in late October 2024 last year. It's our third count since 2019, since our pre-pandemic counts, and we had a result of approximately 36% alternative modes in 2024, a 64% drive-alone rate. And the current policy, which is the same as 2023, is all Genentech employees are expected to spend at minimum 50% of their time on campus. So, that same policy, and showing that kind of consistent policy over time. In terms of alternative modes, our Genen bus remains ever-popular. I believe total rides exceeded 1,200 people in general on most days of commute. Carpool and Transit Connector, the BART, Caltrain, and Ferry Terminal Connectors were about 9.5% each, and then additional modes rounding out the last few percentages. What's exciting is, just like last year, when you consider those who worked remotely or were absent as a part of single occupancy trips avoided, that totals the majority. So, really, that's 41% drove alone, 23% chose an alternative mode of transportation, and then 36% of all total employees worked remote or were absent on a given day. A little bit of a new thing this year, we're going to highlight our fantastic mobility and transportation program in a little bit more depth. You're probably very familiar with this. You see the shuttles, you see the buses. Our program is a large partnership nowadays, even compared to just five years ago, due to the great work of our transportation team. But companies in Oyster Point contribute to fund the bus system, and we have about, we've seen about, excuse me, we've seen about 75, over 75,000 rides in 2024 just for the Genen bus system. Shared Transit Connectors, we've seen over 160,000 rides. And the critical component with that is there's no ticket, there's no reservation, it's free to anybody, and everyone is eligible to utilize that service to provide those last-mile connections to the campus. And in 2024, in October, we started thinking even more about trips around Oyster Point, not just trips to and from Oyster Point, thinking about how can we reduce single occupancy vehicle trips around the campus and throughout Oyster Point in general? And that's where this innovative scooter share program comes into play. So, in just five months, we've seen over 20,000 rides on a scooter share system that's a partnership with a company called Veo. And really, we selected Veo because of their focus on safety. So, this program, it allows individuals to take one-way rides, but you're required to park your scooter in a specific location where you start and where you end. So, it's not completely free-floating. It's complimentary for Oyster Point Mobility Partners, up to 60 minutes, and is available for all, as well as a paid option. And what's great is it utilizes a much safer seated riding position, which I think people have really taken to. It's very comfortable, and I think that's evidenced by more than 2,000 signed-up users within less than a six-month period, which I think is a great result. And we're excited to continue monitoring this program, and we'll hopefully bring back a great result next year, when we're before you again, on our annual report reporting. And excited to answer questions about that program at the end. Our trip cap results, and as you know, we have a master plan mandated trip cap of about 5,200 a.m. peak hour single occupancy vehicles, and we're well below that, at just below 3,500 trips. That's a decrease from 2023. And our parking inventory increased just slightly by about 70 stalls or so, primarily due to a reduction in construction activities in 2024 from 2023, with occupancy right around 60%, 61%, which is fairly low. I believe it allows us a lot of, quite a bit of flexibility for the future. Okay, excellent. We'll touch on a few more topics and then get to questions. In 2024, Genentech contributed a 1.5 million prepayment of housing linkage fees. There was no transportation fee last year, that's an odd number of years, so we'll be back next year with a transportation fee payment. And then, we completed a one-time doubling of our community fund grant program, and we're able to benefit 17 recipients this past year with a total funding grant of $200,000. Helped benefit a wide range of programs, events, and organizations throughout the South San Francisco area. This is a very important program to Genentech, and one that was created as a result of the master plan, the goal to facilitate kind of a blended local giving program to support South San Francisco residents and enhance civic life. And those grants range from $5,000 to $25,000. This is a sampling of some of the organizations that were beneficiaries of the grant program. Did a lot more outreach last year on this program in particular, and we're excited that there was a significant increase in applicants as well. Well, no changes in 2024 to our proposed, our existing or proposed development standards, design guidelines, mobile vendors, or employee amenity activity programs. Nothing to report today on those topics. As I mentioned earlier, we will be back in the near future to discuss rezoning some of those properties that have been acquired in the last few years into the master plan district zoning, which is a requirement of the master plan. We'll have more details to share in the upcoming months. Okay, excellent. I think that about does it for me. Excited to hear any questions or concerns and provide answers. Thank you again for your time this evening.
So, does any of the Commissioners have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
I've got questions for the applicant, and I think it's probably going to be asked by a couple of my fellow Commissioners here. You mentioned it, what does privatize roads mean to you in this context?
Well, the Genentech campus has changed dramatically over the years, and in the past, there have been more, more, more owners, a variety of owners in the campus area, and that's not particularly the case anymore. So, our thinking was the, Genentech owns the vast majority of land, and the city is paying for maintenance of roads that primarily benefit Genentech. So, to be more consistent with the surrounding existing privatized roads, it makes a lot of sense to privatize those additional roads. So, Genentech would take responsibility for maintenance, and obviously, there would be a purchase agreement with the city for those rideways.
I think it might make sense for the maintenance, but would that come with access restrictions for the general public?
Well, Genentech is committed, always, to maintaining access to the Wind Harp and maintaining access to the shoreline and to the Bay Trail. That includes parking access for both facilities. That includes access in existing locations and perhaps additional future locations, and expanding and encouraging that access. The master plan contemplates a road closure that's in the master plan, and Genentech feels that at a certain point, that could be an appropriate option for this area, just as was contemplated in the past.
Commissioner Baker, I just want to jump in real quick on that item. It will come forward as its own standalone item, and we'll be able to give a lot more kind of background, kind of the long-term vision for all of that as part of that meeting. It's not part of what, this is basically looking back at what was done in 2024, so just want to note that we, if there's specific things you'd like to see, I think that's good for us to know, but otherwise, like, we will definitely come back and talk about that specific item in all kinds of detail, probably some at an April.
Thank you, because I think we're all gonna, we're gonna want all kinds of detail before we make any statements on it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a follow-up question on the future proposed privatization. Why not a more periodic arrangement, like a lease or something that wouldn't confer permanent ownership?
I think that's an arrangement that could be contemplated. Maybe Sophie Martin can speak to the history behind that thought process, but I think this really, the goal is to create a little bit more consistency. Quite a few roads within the campus are private in this way, and to make that consistency a little bit more even, it seems to make sense to go with kind of the same route of vacating the street. Some roads in South Campus are private, some roads along San Bruno are private, just, it depends on the area. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to hear more about the history of that, how some of them are and aren't private based on whether in San Bruno or South City.
Yeah, I think when we come back before you, we're happy to provide all the details about the history. I think that would be a good exhibit to present as well.
Anyone else?
Yeah, through the Chair. Thank you for the comprehensive report. We always appreciate it, and especially the transportation demand management. You've obviously done a great job. My question is, how is the transportation coordinated with other companies east of 101? Can you elaborate on the agreements? Do other companies pay Genentech? Because we're seeing other companies have buses now as well. I think Merck and a couple of others have seen. Can you just elaborate to educate us?
Well, I can elaborate to the specifics on the agreements themselves. Due credit to our transportation team, who are fantastic. I sit near them, and they're working so, in such a detailed way to bring on new private operators, think about new mobility options, reach out proactively in some cases to nearby landowners or organizations to ultimately bring them and fold them into this program. I think the success speaks for itself, and quite often, my understanding is, these organizations approach Genentech, and then it's a matter of discussions and negotiations to ultimately bring those additional staff into the program. It's an incredibly easy program to use, and I think that's reflective in the ridership. And I know that our transportation team is always reaching out to these new organizations who join the Oyster Point community to try to fold them into the program, to create some consistency for different staff among, throughout the peninsula.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and especially with staff, in the past, we've asked, how do we hold the companies accountable to those annual reports and annual assessments? So, we appreciate the comprehensive reports you provide.
Does any member of the public wish to address the Commission on this item, on this item at this time? Please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who wish to provide comment.
We've not received any speaker cards.
So, after that, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the Commission for discussion. Commissioner Baker, do you have anything?
No, I, since we only have, first, thank you for the report. It's an excellent report, always glad to hear what's going on our east side. Obviously, there's issues that I need to have more information on as they come before us, so I look forward to those in a couple, next month, it sounds like, almost. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, S, oh, please, sir, go ahead.
I'm seconding the thanks and appreciation for the report and the open communication. I think just picking up on themes that I'd love to see staff dig into and have more conversation about when it comes back to us is just the continued nature of the balance when you have these kinds of public-private partnership relationships, and, you know, appreciating that Genentech is doing a lot to be that Genentech is doing a lot to be a great neighbor and to participate in community life and civic life, and then also trying to understand, you know, when and where the decisions serve the public good. For example, you know, access to the public trail, and just, you know, kind of generally the city's relationship and responsibility to infrastructure, and, you know, implications for privatizing some of that. I think I'd just like to better understand that and the context and the possible implications. But appreciative of the open communication and Genentech's continued commitment to be good neighbors in South City.
Excellent. Does any commissioner have any other items or announcements? Okay. Well, with that, I adjourn the meeting from March 6, 2025. Thank you so much.